Call the meeting to order at seven oh eight. Some general announcements, this meeting is being broadcast on local cable TV and recorded for brief broadcast on the local cable channels and on the internet. Meeting also accessible by remote participations, instructions are listed on the website. Upcoming Sage Center events, there are several events listed in the meeting packet and also along the Council on Aging website. Historical Commission's Tales of Our Town Baseball Fever, West Newbury's Golden Days on the Diamond, another great monthly article from the Historical Commission. Planning Board is holding a listening session on draft accessory dwelling units bylaw tomorrow at seven PM via Zoom. There are also some public meetings coming up related to housing opportunities and the MBTA community planning process Tuesday, January, sorry, June twentieth at seven. And there's a design workshop on Tuesday, June twenty seventh at six PM. Still open positions FY twenty four on several boards and committees. I want to call attention to the associate member on the planning board, that's a really important board. It's a great way to get involved in town affairs, you learn about development and zoning and that kind of thing. And so that's a real need for the planning board right now. Yeah, finally reminded to subscribe for email town agendas means and announcements at www.wnewberry.org backslash subscribe. So we have a consideration of requests for three committees. I think we'll take those and then I'd like to move up the discussion. For item C, because Lisa needs to go to the concomitant at seven thirty, is that all right with you two? And then we'll go back and do Ash Street because the police chief is here for that. Okay, so the first, um, did you pull those up, Angus? The first appointment. So Diana Denny, what do you? You are interested in the tree committee, do you want to tell us a little bit about your interest or your background?
I have an undergraduate degree in environmental design with landscape architecture and city planning. I'm interested in that too. And then I also have a science degree in nursing, which is what I did for years, but I did study at the New Alkali Institute, I spent a lot of time with trees and gardening. So I liked their website, I thought it would be the way to start to know the town, I moved here just a couple of years ago, but I grew up.
Do you guys have any questions for?
I do, I'm almost afraid to ask it. I'll be in favor of appointing, I just want to ask, do you have any opinion on the Emerald Hill Ash Bora and the town spending the sixty thousand dollars to treat one hundred and seventy seven trees?
You can say no.
I don't want to make that yard, I'm not going to treat it, it's too hard gone. It's, you know, it's a huge loss, they're great shaped trees, they're beautiful trees, it's just, it's, it's really hard to sit around and watch them die, so you do what you can do. And see how far you get with it, right? But yeah, and it's planting.
Chris, Chris, it's Fred Shinania, how come you didn't ask me?
Because she's the candidate.
I see.
It was a spirited discussion. I was on Pincom at the time, we, we looked to do a reduced program. Sit well at town meeting, but hopefully on the tree committee going forward, you'll be able to evaluate how successful the program is.
Anything, Rick?
I don't, I, I, background sounds, sounds great and, and it's a great way to get your feet wet.
It also doesn't preclude you from being the associate member of the planning board?
So I, I'd move that we appoint Diana Denny to the tree committee for a position that, for the, for FY twenty four, so it's just a three year.
So if you'd like, we can fill this with a full three year term.
Oh, it's, so they're typically three year?
Yes.
Okay.
In that case, it would be through FY twenty six then, so does, so, so you actually wouldn't, because it is a three year term, you wouldn't actually be on the committee then until?
July one.
Until July one, but that's minimal data, assuming you're, you're good with three, three years.
One second, thank you for the discussion, all in favor? Thank you.
Great, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Ian James. Going to serve on, let's see, Energy and Sustainability Committee, Planning Board.
Wendy, there's a discrepancy.
So I'll explain the discrepancy, so we had emailed, he sent his application to the select board and I strongly recommended the finance committee because I, I know we're, we're down a member. But I understand in subsequent conversations for the town clerk. We're supposed to convince him. So, so what is your interest?
So I think based on talking to Jim, it made a lot of sense, hell, I've never went by the way. I think it makes a lot of sense for associate on the planning board, I have a lot of interest in that. Jim had mentioned a year tenure for that and energy and sustainability, energy was my first choice, went to the town meeting, very excited about a lot of still affordable projects we've done, also want to undertake. And I think the planning board really interested me from the standpoint of understanding the town, you know, how, how zone works, how we act on that, is approved, is not approved, I'll be thinking about that from a commercial residential standpoint. And associate members seem like a good way to observe it, understanding there were elected members that really kind of made the decisions, so those are my two, I think it makes sense. New to the town as of last year, almost a year now, it's myself, my wife, little guy, our two and a half year old and a little guy on the way. So, yeah, I, I come from the Boston area, I'm on the stone and I am just excited, I was at the town meeting, very, very compelling direct democracy and I figured I'd love to kind of do that.
Very good, very cool. So how does it work with the planning board, they typically like to have a say. Right, so?
Yeah, the, uh, who's the authority for the associate?
So what would you recommend, Jim?
If, if you want the planning board included, I would say present him as a candidate to the planning board and maybe you can go to their next meeting.
Sure.
And, and they can have a discussion and they can come back with our recommendation if that works.
Sure.
There is actually a next meeting, although it's a listening section, but there's a next meeting tomorrow night.
That's just, yeah, that's one thing on the agenda.
I just, that's when I was on planning board, we were given a candidate without an stay and they said it's the way it is from the select board, so.
Well, that is.
It's a courtesy if you want to.
I can start on the background, that helps.
Just to point out to you, from another planning board experience we had, as the associate member, you will sit there ninety nine percent of the time and have nothing to do. The only thing that, when you get it, we had one member that was an associate for two or three years.
Sure.
And it was one issue, he wanted the vote on, he came for the vote, leading to the vote, you only fill in if somebody has to recuse themselves or adapt from discussions. You can discuss anything you want.
Sure.
And this person got so incensed, they up and resigned in the middle of meeting, won't get to be voted, so, just, I'm just saying, be aware.
Yeah, no, I think I'm really interested in understanding how that works from this town's perspective, right?
Yeah, so sitting, sitting as an associate member, you would see how the planning board works and the, the issues that you would participate in would be special permits which require a, um, uh, five person board. Or, you know, five voting members. And, and that's really the, that's, you know, functionally, that's where the associate member fits in, strictly on special permit votes.
Yeah, and that will align with the two committees simply because I can really dig my teeth into energy, it was so, and I take more of a passive role.
Okay, so do you have any other questions?
Actually, I do, so, you, you can tell a little bit about your background, because it didn't, it didn't come through here on, on this page.
Oh, yeah, excellent, so my background is studying computer science.
Oh, actually, it is, oh, it's, there's much more there than there is on the page, it was in the packet.
I can talk through it, it's great, easier to talk than read. So my background is a certified argumentalist, Pittsburgh, computer science and finance, so broadly Massachusetts, not a native tech, right? So somewhere near Cambridge, I came here for tech startup software, I've been in robotics for the last six years, a lot of incredible robotics. In this area, my life's in biotech, also a great capital for biotech, so, you know, that's why we're here, because of the opportunity, I think the, the incredible kind of academic and, and technology nexus in that area. We actually started as renters down in Beacon Hill, we moved to Cambridge, we rented, we bought a house in stone, now we're up here, so we're, we're making the hard things in New England. We were actually kind of planning to, to move and the pandemic hit and we, you know, fell away with New England because we didn't understand that Boston was kind of New England, you had to really go north to get the magic. And so we discovered the North Shore, you know, for New York, for New York, so well, then decided to try to find a home here, we're looking at the plan of placing West Newbury and we've, we've been here for, for three years since. So my background from a financial standpoint is I started in, in a fund in New York that did kind of private equity investment in actually energy infrastructure in South America. So there's a lot of kind of background there, I'm just saying about capital planning, more scale projects, a little bit bigger scale than West Newbury for, for country scale, but, you know, it was, it was interesting to see that. It kind of got me interested in energy and investing in energy and, yeah, so that, that's, that's the background there, I have my term pension, I have a level one certification. And, yeah, still actively involved kind of on the financial and strategic side in my job while still technically oriented as well, so, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Well, do you want to make a motion?
I'd rather say I'm on Pincom.
You can't be on Pincom, it's the only committee, you can't be on another committee.
But you could be on energy training and associate.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I guess, yes, for starters, sort of doing this one at a time. I, you know, I would move to appoint Ian Kenneth James to Energy Sustainability Committee for a term running through. And I think this came up in conversation the other day, that the Energy Sustainability Committee appointments only are for a single fiscal year. So that would be through FY twenty four, and maybe that is something we want to reconsider, how, how long those appointments last at some point, but.
I won't take the person.
Further discussion? Thanks, and then I think we could go ahead and make an appointment to the planning board and then I'll just reach out. Well, I mean, we don't need their approval, but I just want to, you know, send the application along and, I don't know, what do you think, Angus?
Yeah, I think, I think Jim said that was, was great kind of offer recommendation, planning board sent along the material and, you know, invite you to attend whether tomorrow night or they, they meet again in two weeks from tomorrow as well. So if you're going to attend one of their next couple of meetings, introduce yourself and then this board meets again the twenty sixth.
Yeah, so we actually will be meeting again for three weeks, typically every two weeks, but it'll be three weeks this time and so there'll be, you know, you'll have an opportunity if you'd like to go to a planning board meeting beforehand.
And their meetings are virtual as well, so I'll, I'll, we'll send you it up in the morning with the town planner.
Something up and go watch TV.
So.
What do you think, kid?
Right, yeah, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Wanted to do some shout out or something.
Thank you, all right, the last appointment that we have to consider is Bob Beacher from Council on Aging.
I have a question for Jim.
Yes.
Whereas he's my neighbor, can I participate, is any conflict or?
Do you have a financial interest?
I was gonna say, there's no real conflict.
I don't know, what about Bobby?
I think it's fine, right? Okay.
You can, you can still do each other favors, you know, you can haul his trash cans in if you need.
He's the best neighbor ever.
I'm not going to step down, what we've heard already is. I qualify because I'm part of the population at this stage.
Yeah.
I don't know that much about what the board does, but I'm eager to learn and I think we've got a great leader over here, we sure did, she's brought a lot of energy and I'd like to be part of it.
He is already part of that, he's been a lot of sharing.
Yeah, I, I've been in this a little while, so, in fact, I know most of the members of the board already, by name. There's a few I don't know by name, but I'm sure I recognize them, so I feel like I'm a part of it and I'm willing to learn what it takes to be a member.
Great, thank you, are there you, any questions?
I do not, I just state again, he's the best neighbor you could have, I'd go for Bob or anything.
Maybe you should make a motion then.
What, what's the term, is it how long a term?
Uh, so this would be, my suggestion would be for a full three year term.
Yeah, starting July one.
I'm going to appoint Bob Beacher for three years at the Council on Aging.
Very good. Okay, further discussion, all in favor? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, I'm on the phone with Eric too.
Okay, we have seven minutes, Lisa, so we're, we're going to move to item C, which is the Energy Sustainability Committee Recommended Consultant and Contract Terms for Municipal Energy Aggregation. So are you going to be doing the discussion or?
I certainly can, or?
I think it would be good since you're on the board.
Actually, if you, you, yeah, yeah, you start and, and we'll.
We all know that I'm already voted to look into, authorize the select board to look into municipal aggregation of power purchases. Something that's done in a number of states, starting with Massachusetts. And many, many of our neighboring communities are either in the process of or already have done municipal aggregation. The next step is to find a consultant. The consultant does all the heavy work, they do all the filings, they do all the regulatory, they do the negotiation with suppliers, they help us figure out what we want in terms of. Options to give the, the residents and usually there are three options and they vary in terms of how much renewable energy. And, and the price will vary also, so, and, and, you know, you can have different terms of contracts for supplies, so forth and so on, and they will help us figure that out. But the first step is to get a consultant. There are only three consultants in the state and the one that's most active on the North Shore is Colonial Power. They have an agreement with Mayor Matt Valley Planning. This would be a five year contract with Colonial Power and they would do everything for a fee of a mil per kilowatt hour, which is standard, this is highly regulated. And, and they will pretty much do what I said they would do, they will help us first, assuming we sign the contract, develop a plan. And then you need to do a lot of notification to the townspeople, you need to go through Massachusetts Department of DOER. You need to go through the Department of Public Utilities and I practiced before that, I do pro bono legal work, so I would be very much involved with that. And then ultimately, we developed a program and launched it, so that's sort of the, the way it works. And the next step is to, as I say, get the contract with Colonial Power. We did send it to you from the Energy and Sustainability Committee with a recommendation that we go for, it's all pretty cookie cutter, but it takes forever at DPU, which is a whole other story. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell, I'm happy to talk to you more about it and Rick probably has something to add, but that's pretty much it.
Yeah, I guess all I'd say is, you know, sort of confirming what you said about timeframe, it's kind of indeterminate, we don't really know how long it will take. You know, there's been a lot of unhappiness directed at DPU regarding this, probably in other topics too, but, um. You know, I think there's a flame underneath DPU right now to try to become more responsive and hopefully that will be the case and it won't take the three years that I think it took me to report. It's, it's been a long haul for a lot of other communities and hopefully, hopefully we'll get through this more quickly. I guess the only other thing that I mentioned is, because it was a question I asked Chip when we were talking, Chip Wallace. That, you know, so everybody is automatically included and you can opt out. Everybody's automatically included unless you already have a competitive energy supplier, you know, unless you've already selected a competitive energy supplier. And. If you've done that and you prefer to, to participate in municipal aggregation, you just need to then opt in.
You said they had an agreement already with Mayor Matt Valley Planning. And this looks to just be a generic oil plate contract too.
Yes.
Seems like the approval should be pretty darn simple.
Yeah.
Any further, you guys, anybody in the audience?
How does it work if you have solar and you're connected through SRT and things like?
Uh, makes, it makes no difference, it, it, you know, your, 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 um, solar is still not metered and, um, the credit would be on your national grid bill. And actually, I guess that's, I mean, it, it, it's all billed, it's all on, on a single bill, you know, you're.
National Grid would still do all the billing.
Yeah.
And it's completely agnostic as to solar, nothing would change.
Yeah, so it's interesting, actually, if you're producing more than you're using and you, and you develop credits. And you accumulate credits, then that's actually a really good question, I don't know.
Everything is all the same with that.
So the credits are then applied to the, to the, to, to the alternate energy source. When, when you have credits, because typically the national grid currently, I'm not trying to complicate this, I'm just trying to understand it, typically, you know, currently, if you have credits with national grid. And, you know, you, you accumulate credits, when you then start having a bill, those credits are deducted from what you owe national grid. But in this case, you won't be owing, even though national grid is billing you, you won't owe national grid.
And, and national grid works, this is true if you have a competitive supplier as well.
Yeah.
Um, national grid will take care of it all.
Okay.
It'll be invisible to a customer with solar.
Okay.
I'm, I'm in that boat because I have a third party supplier.
Yeah.
And a ton of solar.
Okay.
And that's how it works.
Okay, great, thanks, good question.
Any other questions?
So national grid would still be the distributor, which is.
Yes, and the New England岱宗是still the transmission operator, so.
Okay, are you both ready to vote on this or?
I, I am. Sure, yeah, I'd move that we. Approve the contract, approve that Angus signed the contract with, the town manager signed the contract with Colonial Power to proceed with, with municipal aggregation.
One second.
Further discussion? Angus, do you have any? Okay. All right, all in favor? Great, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
All right, seven thirty. Um, the next item, I'm going to move item F, discussion of Ash Street posted speed up because we have the police chief here. So I just want to preface this conversation by saying that a lot of this has happened on Facebook and it would be really great if people would communicate directly with the town manager or the select board. So that we can, you know, bring this up, I mean, I think there's enough conversation that it's worth discussing right now, but at some point, we also should talk about Facebook and if we want to have somebody monitor it, you know, whether a staff person monitors it. So that's like a policy discussion in the future. The other thing I would say to frame this conversation is that there is a posted speed limit both ways on that stretch. And very many people do not follow that, so I feel like it's a speed enforcement issue and, and I touched base with our police chief and he told me the things that he has been, his department has been doing, so. Chief, if you want to just give us a summary of what you've been working on.
Yes, so we, we've obviously, because the change in the season is now, good weather is out, people are out walking, biking, and birding and whatnot down in that, that beautiful side of town. We've got a lot of complaints about speed, vehicles, speeds, regular vehicles, commercial vehicles, that X trucks, Amazon trucks. We have so many cut throughs through West Newbury to Route ninety five, so it's not uncommon this time of year to get complaints from citizens about Ash Creek, Bachelor's Creek, Maple Street. Problems with the intersection and stop signs, Ash Creek is a challenge, it's a straight shot, straight road, nice and flat. Spoke to the resident about discussing the use of ski bumps, the ash bump is a giant speed bump, that's all it is. Just a washboard, yeah, we're, we're continuing to speak for it. We've been there regularly now, we've been weekends, I directed my officers to be there multiple times during both day shift and second shift. Because it's just, there's a lot more people down there now than there is in Littlewood, you know. You raise great point, speed limit is set, there are few signs for restrictions on CDL vehicles, merchant trucks, that don't tend to get observed. And additionally tickets for speed and also violation of over limit vehicles passing through there, but speaking with one of the residents earlier, it's, it's a daily occurrence.
I commute to work through there and always go to the speed limit and more times than not, I'm passed in a cloud of dust, you know, people can't wait, you know, to get off that section, so. So a lot of the discussion on Facebook seemed to be about other ideas and cameras and so forth and, but I really feel like it's an enforcement issue and we want to put all of our town's resources on patrolling that one road. I mean, I did see cruisers out several times since this came up, so, I mean, I appreciate the attention of your officers to that. Do you want to make a comment and then I'll see if anybody in the audience wants to comment?
Yeah, I guess I have a question for Mike and another comment, first of all. I know when, there have been times where, probably largely because of the road surface, cars leave the road. And, and, you know, they probably get going, they're going too fast in the washboard and, you know, start bouncing around and, and hooking a wheel off the side in soft stuff and, and down in the muck. I don't know how frequently that happens, so, you know, there, there's like a, you know, another safety issue, you know, sort of. I guess reinforcing the need for, for enforcement, which of course, there's a lot, a whole, there's a lot of other roads in town and a lot of other things for you to spend your resources on. So that was just one point, I, I don't know how often that happens, I mean, does that happen once a decade or?
Most of the time it's due to this, people are not paying attention.
Okay.
And they leave the road for that reason, and then the, the conditions too, so it's raining, foggy, nighttime.
Yeah. But it's not happening. But but just in general terms, I mean, is it an, is it an annual occurrence? Is it a monthly occurrence? Is it, if you had to?
Yes, several times a year.
Yeah, okay.
I I see it because I walk, you know, almost every day. I see two or three a year.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I've only seen it once, but but I know that it happens. Okay. And my my other point is, it's really a, you know, it's a use of D P W resources and a financial issue for the town. A handful of times a year, you know, I I actually avoid driving Ash Street most of the time because it tends to get pretty bad, you know, pretty, pretty washboardy and potholy. And I look at my car and I say, do I want to drive there? Do I want to drive on pavement? Maybe I drive a half mile farther. But if I look at in the long run, wear and tear my vehicle, I avoid Ash Street if I can, if I know that it's going to be bad. So a handful of times a year, I'll drive by you know, across Ash Street on the middle and I'll see the road closed sign. And that tells me that D P W is is doing maintenance on the road because the road condition has gotten so bad. This is the, this is the email that I sent you Angus that that somehow, you know, probably got lost in the thousand other emails that you got that day. But I I, you know, I I, my point was that with the gravel road, vehicle speed is a direct correlation between vehicle speed and how rapidly the road degrades. And, you know, being being on the Energy Committee, of course, I I broke it down to an energy concern. Not how much energy you burn, but how much energy you deliver to the road surface when you're driving. The faster you're going, basically, your, the energy you deliver to the road surface goes up to the square of your speed. So you you double your speed, you deliver four times more energy to the surface of the road, which means that you splash out more silty water. You splash, you know, you 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 knock more road, more stones out of the road. But you make the road get get bad much more quickly. That corresponds dollars for all of us because it's maintenance dollars and it's also availability of the road to everybody. So, you know, there's, there's an economic reason or a financial reason why we ought to watch that road, watch speeds on that road and enforce speeds on that road. And it will reduce other costs.
First, did you have any?
Well, I've got a lot of stuff.
Well, organize your thoughts.
To Rick's point first, D P W, and this is the past three or four years, they may maintain it too well from what it used to be. And that's, I think a lot of people go too fast. And somebody at one point asked, one person when they were going through the road so fast, why are you going so fast? And he said, because when you get to thirty they said, when you get to thirty miles an hour, you don't feel as much, which I tried that once, only once. And it's actually true. So it's a weird dynamic. So three things on the road. It comes down to, and people said, yeah, close it or leave it open. But one hundred percent of the road has to stay open through traffic, through town. We've got too many roads already closed, J B Little, the Middle Street Bridge. And when I first moved to town, Frank's next street actually used to be open to bikers. So that that seems to me to be a non-negotiable. Number two is is the wildlife protecting. And that's what seems to have a lot of people upset. And it, this has been going on for thirty years I've been in town. You know, the geese have five or six babies and they're all killed within a month. And it's it's the geese, the turtle, the snakes, the whatever out there. What that all then distills down to is is the poor behavior of these drivers. Who they are, I'm not sure. Even walking through there, it's very frightening. So what I do anymore is like, put on my cell phone a video when I'm walking through the swamp each day. And eighty percent of the people, once they see the phone, slow down. They know, you know, make a, they know you're videoing. Probably fifteen percent of the people keep going and don't care. And then the other five percent of the people confront you and want to have a battle. And that's when it becomes a problem. And so it is effective, but you've got to be careful with how you do it. So I would encourage people, and it sounded on the Facebook like a lot of people eye out there walking, biking and running through there. But I would videotape as you go through and document it as much as you can because I I think people are just not cognizant of what they're doing. I don't think it's always deliberate. Just in a rush to get somewhere. So maybe they're often put large signage, you know, these, you know, I know the signage, but somehow to get their attention that what they're doing is disruptive. And they they get that point when you video them. Other than that, you know, I thought about and Hong Kong would have to get involved, you know, from like April till July, can you put like, you know, that orange mesh fence on either side to keep the the critters from running back and forth across the street at that timeframe? I don't know. So how do you get these people to to slow down? Is it education or is it?
Somebody, somebody passes you. It's happened to me a couple of times. Sounds like it's happened to you. Now that's aggressive. That, I mean, that's that's
So so those people, a sign is not going to influence them.
Yeah.
You know, that that, I guess that's my thing. You know, I think we need to be focused and, you know, whatever we think needs to happen and and have it be realistic.
Is riding the road, letting the road ride out? Because at home, when you see that those really big swale ruts,
Yeah.
people would go much slower. I don't think that puts a ton of liability.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Do you have anything else to add, Mike? Based on what we've talked.
I know, we
Okay.
we were talking back at the station about signage for both commercial vehicles and for speed. And even to Rick's point, when we were reviewing the town for the Share the Road signs, straight away, there's not a lot of reasons for people to slow down and stop. So they're not necessarily going to see
Yeah.
any sort of signage.
Or pay attention.
Yeah.
All right, Rob?
Have you considered asking Merameack Valley Planning admission to lend a hand for any things that they know about traffic coming? I mean, fifty percent of the work is is on roads that we've used in the past. Traffic coming is not not, you know, goes on all the time. We actually can use a lot of the techniques that are used elsewhere in this town.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Anybody else?
I walk it every day and I appreciate the places there. I think the Merameack Cityville town, I see them. And there's no regard for human, animals, cars, or anything. There is, it's a danger every time I walk. I have two dogs. I literally almost in the water with someone who are coming through. And it's unsafe. A friend of mine's son was hit by a rock from a car driving so fast that they walked him in the car. It's just dangerous. And I don't understand why we can't even put a barrier. I mean, school buses don't drive on it. That tells us that that's not the route they should be taking. I don't understand why we can't close it. I just think it's it's a danger for humans and animals.
Could you, do you mind saying your name?
Okay. When I live on Moulton, I walk the loop every day and I go all the way up to near, uh, the farm.
Yeah.
And they go from the stop sign all the way through the the marsh full speed ahead without any regard. And they do slow down when they see you guys, but they can see you guys.
Yeah.
They, they know you're there.
Yeah.
Those are cheap spots. It's hard.
Yeah, it's so hard. And and I do, I do think if you put numbers from four ninety-five, could just get them under ninety-five. And I don't think there are a lot of benefits. I true, though. I think it's a comfort.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely, that's true.
And it's dangerous.
So question, and I think an idea that could help solve ninety percent of this if it is indeed now. The question is, I'm new to town. I was put on there on the first day we drove there. I said, what the hell is this? Excuse my language. Why is it unpaved? I'm guessing it's wildlife or, but for most people, we just, I don't understand. I just like seeing the geese and looking across.
Can you, Angus, can you give a quick?
Actually, probably, yeah, so so because this, the history goes, well, it goes way back.
Okay.
But so essentially, Ash Street is a peat swamp.
Okay.
Or or that that swamp there is a peat swamp. And, you know, going way back when a road was created there, and I don't know the early history of it, but you know, gravel was put on on the peat swamp and on the peat. And and it settles, it compresses the peat over time. So you put on a load of peat or a load of gravel, degrade it. And over time, it compresses the peat, compresses the peat, and then put more on and you compress the peat. So there are are many, many layers of gravel that have been added over time. There was discussion perhaps a decade ago or a little bit more than a decade ago of paving it.
Yeah.
Which we each had our own opinion about it. I was never an advocate for paving it, but somebody did a little wildlife research and apparently I was able to locate a turtle called the Blandings Turtle, which is a a threatened species in Massachusetts. And in the effort to to get permission or to to get the town to pave it, the, I don't know, it was Mass Fish and Wildlife or what what division of Mass State Government looked at the, at the road, realized that there was a a threatened species involved and suggested that in fact, they might close the road. At which point, the advocates for paving it immediately started talking about that. And 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 it remains as it is.
Is speeding an issue because it's paved or unpaved? Or is speeding going to affect the mother?
Probably gets faster.
Right, no, no, but that was the history of of why the surface is what it is.
Also, Bert used to say that if they paved it, it's only going to force it to sink and the pavement will never
The pavement, pavement's, you know, pretty rigid. So pavement would fail really fast.
That was, that was one of the issues with the original pavement argument was that it's going to be built on this peak face.
Right.
And every spring, it's gonna, it's gonna pitch and roll and it's gonna break apart and cause even more environmental damage than just leaving the road brown. So paving is not an economical alternative.
When when we moved into town, there were two corduroy roads, Ash Street and right in front of our hobbies.
Right.
And we paved it and the asphalt has held for twenty years now. So I don't think that's
Which one do you want?
Middle Street.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I think that's different base under there.
The the peak was originated, and I thought Rick Carroll was going to be here to provide some additional history, but that was part of a journal nurseries projects. And who knows? You know, it's a small little town back in the eighteen hundreds, and Journal Nurseries just decided to build a peat bin, go into a swamp.
No, they didn't build it. They used to mine it.
They used to mine it.
Yeah, that that, that's why if you drive across it, and and you see the 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 long troughs that are filled with water, that's where they mined peat back. I don't know if it was around World War Two. It may, I'm not sure. Or 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 was, was it used for fuel or was it used on on a? I mean, we're getting off topic.
So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Page, ground, page. So an interesting discussion. The idea makes a difference to that.
Yeah.
So Jeff, like us, as new residents, why did we end up on Ash Street? Because Google Maps or Waze told us to do it. Those are crowdsourced, open map initiatives, even though they're behind publicly facing sort of for-profit companies. If indeed the problem is non-residents that are just being sent through there, they don't know about Ash Street. Ninety percent are probably just going to there because Google Maps sent you, just like my innocent wife and I, we bumped up and down in our small vehicle before we had a four by four, right? So the answer to that is simply then, with Waze and Google as well, you can crowdsource a closure based on certain parameters. So you could say, hey, Ash Street is closed to non-residents, right? So in effect, the right type of closure on Google and Waze could stop those platforms from routing traffic through it? Pretty, pretty straightforward.
Yeah. My my guess is that ninety percent of the people who go fast on there are commuting. So 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 they're not looking at, they're not looking at Google Maps or Waze. They're, for them, it's the shortest way to New Newton Hampshire.
The idea, these people know this route and they don't need their web mapping device.
Exactly, yeah. So they're just, they're on their way home or on their way to work and and you know, they're
Fair, but based on that resident, if it is big Amazon or FedEx trucks, they're going to be a driver that is not noticing.
Right, and that's a good point. It's not really those guys. That's, that's what, yeah, right.
Even if it cuts twenty percent, which maybe it's more than twenty percent, right? Like, this is a lot of anecdotal data, so.
And did you have a comment?
So I did, I wanted two things to request of you guys to consider. First, obviously, the the police department is investing a lot of resources, expensive resources, in controlling this area. Highway Department is investing a lot of money in maintaining the road that is constantly breaking down. And the town, if 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 the road is not staying open, the town has a, I believe, a legal responsibility to maintain a safe passage. But they can't, they can't just let the road go and just not not continually maintain it. So, you know, the highway department being forced to maintain it, we've got the police department wasting resources trying to stop people running through a very short area. I mean, they they speed on Ash Street, find it, low on Ash Street, you can also on Ash Street. So I'm aware of the amount of fast cars that drive by there on a daily basis. I I can't appeal to you on that level, so I'm appealing to you on an economic level. That maybe the resources we're spending to keep that part of the road open twelve months a year, maybe it's not worth it. And maybe we can close it in the spring. It gets closed in the spring when it when it floods anyway. Maybe we can extend that closure from, say, April to July or August, when when the mating season is over and the little critters are at least off the road and not sitting there next to their parents waiting to get crushed. It might get closed in the winter, you know, it does get closed in the winter when it gets really bad. So there are, there are seasonal elements to this that could save towns some money. And then I, to to Mr. Baker's point, it's not fair. And I heard this when we talked about closing it before, it's not fair to residents on Garden Street, on Bachelor Street, on any other cut-through road, it's not fair for them to divert the traffic off Ash Street twelve months a year. There has to be a compromise, but I think there's an economic cost here that we're not really addressing.
Okay, thank you.
That's my comment.
Yeah. Angus, can you tell if anybody on the line is I don't see any hands up.
I don't see any hands up. We've got everyone muted. So if there are people online who would like to oh, we do have a hand up, Jamie McCanty and Lisa.
Hi there. Yeah, I'm sorry. I wasn't able to be there in person this evening. I'm just grateful for the conversation. I showed a video on my phone to Officer Manny about a week and a half ago. Somebody either was going there, down there way too fast and killed two probably two-week-old geese or it was intentional. Because as we all know, as we drive down this street, geese tend to move away from a slow-moving car. They don't, you know, jump out in front of the car. And it was devastating to see. There was the mom and the dad, the two babies. And I feel like we live in such a beautiful ecologically unique area. And if, as human beings, if we are not going to protect this wildlife that does not have a voice, I, we're, we're not doing something right as residents of this town. And I know there's the economic, you know, there's the traffic, there's a lot of different components that are at play here. I'm a huge animal lover and I got out of my car. I mean, I I'm crying about it now again. I moved these poor little baby geese that had been just smack dead. The mother, I've never heard a mother goose make noises like this. Like, she knew her babies were dead. And I think a lot of people look at Canadian geese as, you know, lawn rats and they don't love them as creatures of our earth. And so anyway, I saw Officer Manny there and I did stop and I spoke to him for a while and I showed him the video and I sent him a copy of the video and you know, I know we can't save all the animals, but these animals deserve a chance. And as residents of this town, we need to be protecting a spend, you know, we have the blending turtles as well. Like, this is just a very beautiful area and it's what makes our town so special and unique. And I would just, I'd like there, I'm just glad we're having a conversation because I'd like there to be something that we can do. And I don't know if it's, no one wants more signs or lights. It says wildlife. I mean, my kids and I see the sign, it says wildlife protected area. People don't read signs and they don't care. So I don't know. I've been brainstorming my family and I've been talking about this. I'm not really sure what the solution is. I just really want it to be an active part of the conversation that we need to, as humans, be protecting these animals.
Okay, thank you. Lisa?
Hi, Lisa, Forbusham Holtz on Middle Street. So I do, I use that road a good bit too and have moved many turtles off to the side and over the years. One thing that I think might help is having a weight limit for that road. I'm not sure if there is one at at the moment, but what is it, five tons?
Five tons, he says.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what is that? That's, is that like a UPS truck?
No, it's like a dump truck.
It's like the dump trucks that go through there.
I just caught, I just called it, just telling Chief Dwyer, I just called the other day because there was an eighteen-wheeler with a trailer headed to Ash Street. I was like, lose my mind. Hopefully they got that. Lisa, did you have other comments you wanted to add or questions?
Yeah, so I have seen dump trucks on their road too, so I Yeah, so I have seen dump trucks on that road too, so I didn't realize that there was a weight limit, but. Um so I don't know, I don't know how you enforce that, other than having a police presence there, I'm not sure. The other thought that I've always had is that when uh DPW comes and, you know, sort of raids it. And puts, you know, several truckloads of dirt down. Eventually, you know, a good portion of that dirt gets washed or um sprayed into the. I- into the water. And um you can see over the years, I mean, I've been driving it for, I don't know, thirty years or whatever. It it has silted up a bit and 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 gives sort of a foothold for invasive species. To start to grow, which there is a lot more than there used to be loose drive and other things. So um I don't know what. You know, what the um. Government, I don't know, the 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 Department of um Wildlife would would think about that. I I can't think that that's very good either. I don't know if there's a way to control that too. Um but I I I think that somehow enforcing that weight limit. Because the trucks, the larger trucks that I've seen on that road, um you know, probably, maybe they're too high up. To see, you know, turtles or ducks, or maybe it's harder for them. Um and the speeding. Um if if that could be enforced somehow too. Um I think that would go a long way towards making a difference.
Ben, thank you. Mike, you said it's the state police enforce the weight limits, not local police eventually?
No, we can do, we can do enforcement, but we've been working with the state police on Rock Village and also Ash.
Yeah.
Um because they can do a lot more to take a vehicle out of service, do an inspection on the spot.
Mm-hmm.
Things that we're not trained to do, um but they do on a daily basis. So they've been really good at working with us in those two locations.
Mm-hmm.
Um my hope is that that will deter people, because they'll understand that not only are they gonna get a citation. It's gonna be a lot of money, they're gonna be inspected, possibly taken another service.
Yeah.
I would hope that that would change some of these weights.
Yeah, okay. Um I think they have one more comment online and we'll kind of close this discussion. Uh Belle, did you have a comment or a question?
Yes, thank you. Um can you hear me? Just checking.
Yeah.
Okay, um yes, um I, so I'm on Meeting House Hill. I go down um on Ash Street a lot to run. I also like go down there with my son to just. Look at turtles and look at wildlife all the time. I was very affected by Jamie's video. The other day that she posted on Facebook and I was like really upset but thankful at the same time that she. Brought that to everybody's attention, because it was very, very upsetting. Um I've seen many trucks and cars like streaming by with people following them. Saying, did you see that? You know, they were going so fast. And I actually would like to follow up on, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but um someone said something about the um. The turtle barriers on either side of the road. I was wondering if, I think someone brought that up and I would, I would like to hear a follow-up. On um whether that is possible or why it would not be, and that is my comment. Thank you.
Okay, that's something that we can refer to the conservation agent and ask. Um I'm not sure that that's.
I was thinking that more in the context of the geese, because I don't, this sounds crazy, I don't know anything about geese, but. I don't know if they prefer one side of the swamp to the other, but they cross the road for some unknown reason.
Mm-hmm.
So if you put, you know, that little orange snow fence during the, this time of year to stop them, I don't know if it would stop the turtles. That might be a whole, you know, that comment, maybe hay bales, I don't know.
Yeah.
If somebody could check there, yeah.
So we can definitely pursue that. Um some other good ideas, the traffic calming, I'll look into, then then we can see. Uh the waves and Google, um maybe potentially closing during wildlife season, but that that has some challenges. Um you in the back, did you have a comment?
Yeah, my name is Jesse Pomes. Um have you guys considered uh holding my plea? Why people would avoid the route of dead and paid toll?
That's probably true.
I'll cover the revenue. I know what's involved with that, but if uh it costs fifty cents or something to drive down that road. Maybe people would say, not going down that road.
Interesting. All right, we have one minute left and then I want to close this down. So Rich, quickly.
Um my my suggestion is to offload some of the traffic. If we could get Georgetown Road open and Crayle Lake Road open again. The traffic would go that way because it's paved as opposed to the swamp. And I think Angus and everybody just heard my concerns of opening Middle Street, which. You know, for those of you, you know, I'm worried about keeping my road, reopening my road uh as well. But just get as many openings as possible and get the traffic out of town. Um you know, disperse it so that no one neighborhood is getting adversely affected.
True. Yeah, so the first one uh is is when the road closed, signed it up as the most tranquil time of walking. It does not stop. They go right through. They do not care, snow, rain, whatever, they drive through, the sign they not deter. Yeah.
I like the idea of like speed, speed bumps slow people down. You have to stop or slow way down before you go over it. If you have some, I don't know legally what you can do on public roads, but I've seen places where they have movable ones. You have to have a sign warning people that there's a speed.
But they have permanent ones down in Ipswich, for instance, on the way to Hired House. So obviously.
Community, there's no side rocks. People need to use their neighborhoods and and speed bumps that that the police can use. Have wherever the hotspots are, would maybe get it across and it's not, that you just have to go slow.
Yeah.
So Wendy, when when I say traffic calm and air and night value planning, all of these things you discussed.
Yeah.
They're gonna be delinquent with what people are doing different places. And so, so for instance, you could consider. Making the volume go down to two and a half ton, for instance, which is a pickup truck. Anything about pickup truck, you wouldn't allow through, you could have speed bumps, you could have any manner of things. But I think they might be.
They do this all the time.
At yeah, at least they're gonna, they're gonna review the site and and what you're dealing with. Be able to kind of say, well, you know, we've seen this, we've seen this, we like this, we don't like this, whatever.
Yeah, that's good, we definitely follow. If anybody else has, we're we're gonna close the discussion.
Just.
I wanna get Dave's.
Said urgent care, the de-attack, so that's my excuse. I thought Ricky Thurlow was gonna be here to talk about the construction of the road, which I think is very important considering the weight load. That road is, it's built over peat bog, it is built over brush and logs. It's been filmed regularly since seventeen twenty-seven with gravel. The story that Bert told me was that one of the beards was coming across an eighteen-wheeler. At that time, there were trees on either side of Ash Swamp. As Buddy made his way across Ash Swamp, the trees bow in towards the truck. And then the minute he got across, they went dead. That's why I think it's very important, one and anything to enforce the weight limits on that road. One of these days, something's gonna go through.
Right, and yeah, okay. Thanks, everybody. Really appreciate the comments. Feel free to email selectboard@wnewry.org if you have any other questions or comments. We we look at that every day. Um we'll look into these things and figure out some way to report back to people that are interested in the time.
And contact us to dispatch.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Mike, I guess, it sounds like recently, there's been a recent bump in in attempts to to enforce on that, but.
That's that's kind of me doing law enforcement yearly.
Yeah.
But because of the the number of calls, number of concerns.
Yeah.
Weather change, yes.
Yeah.
By the way, the state police, the new unmodernization. The diamond, like, you should get it.
All right, folks, you're welcome to stick around, but. All right. Were you here for any item in particular? I'm offering to leave something up if you're here for a particular. All right, the next item is B, consideration of requests for committee member reappointments for FY twenty-four. Thanks. Should we encourage people to move?
Yeah, that's the whole, yeah.
Yeah.
Gonna be this gently, not quite a dime. Nicely done, Rick, thank you. Okay, committee member reappointments for FY twenty-four. Jim, did you wanna discuss the chart?
Sure, uh so the chart you have before you, everyone who is green. Has confirmed with my office by email or phone call that they are uh interested in seeing a reappointment. Uh for a full term uh to their current position, these are all incumbents. Um anyone who is white or highlighted in white um has not responded yet to the office. I've not heard one way or the other if they're either on. Uh if anyone was not interested, I didn't include them on the list.
Okay.
Um and um anyone, anything in yellow is just vacant positions for reference uh for the board.
So could one of those vacant positions be somebody who's no longer interested?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so this is the.
Yeah, so for example, the um council on aging position that you've applied Bob to was a member we didn't want to get reappointed.
Okay, is that the whole list or?
Uh there's a little bit more um that includes the planning board, quarter registrars, river access, tree committee and zoning as well.
Okay. So just.
Uh just for reference, you did discuss um possibly extending out the terms of stagnating, that are stagn- uh staggering the terms. For um climate change and resiliency, I did put that in there. If you didn't want to do staggered terms. And just want to go back to the the single-year term, that's a way off.
Okay, so one thing that we are talking about doing over the next six months to a year is reviewing all of the committee makeup. What their charge is, um the length of the terms. Um so we'll be rolling that out going forward, so it's possible we may want to make some terms longer, right? Um and and also work on the staggering. So you're gonna work on coming up with a schedule for us to.
Yeah.
Review. Um we're also gonna send out a form to each committee where they can tell us what what they've worked on the last year, what they think their charge is. So we just want to get all the committees into alignment with the select board's objectives. Rob?
Given that you're taking up some thoughts about committees, terms of service, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
We had some discussion. Ben Con and and Chris, because well, I can, about bylaw that requires. We we don't believe that it serves the purpose. Five is fine. Um this isn't about having decided votes three to two, two to three versus three to three. Um because we're just advisory anyways when we vote. So if if an argument is compelling one side or the other, it doesn't matter. Will we vote it two to three or three to two? So I would just ask you, you know, you have some vacancies. I I don't know why we're at six, other than the bylaw, the way the bylaws is, I would ask you to reconsider. That bylaw, I would like to see it go away.
Mm-hmm. Would the finance committee be interested in drafting revisions to the bylaw? Could that fall to consider?
Sure.
And that, what do you think about that, Greg and Chris?
Well, this, I think that's a standalone, separate uh island.
It would have to be voted at the next time.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's town bylaw. Yeah, it's a town bylaw, but I mean, I think it's it's its own self, it's not, it's not within another document.
Yeah, no, you you're, I'm pretty sure you're correct.
Yeah, but but I'll look at that and I'll make that.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, be an issue of.
Sure.
A project for the work on to.
Yeah, we just found that awkward. We had one meeting, we couldn't figure out the vote went, because it was an abstention and everything else.
Yeah.
It said, hey, five doesn't really make sense. Six, I'm saying, I mean, six, five, five dozen, six dozen.
Yeah.
Well, particularly since, no matter what you're reading.
The wildlife that are killed on Ash Street.
You you're always chasing yet another volunteer, so.
No, it it makes sense to me, so, so we can definitely consider that as part of it. So in terms of these appointments that are up tonight, do we want to just vote for them on mass, or do you have any comments or questions on any individual ones?
Um I do not.
Okay, so we're voting for all those in green, right? Chris, are you okay with doing it that way versus individual lines? So we're, we would be voting to reappoint all the people that are highlighted in green on the screen, who have expressed an interest in in another term.
And I'm gonna basically say I would, I don't have problems with any, but I don't know most of them in the committees.
Yeah.
Guys do, so I'm gonna sort of go with the flow.
I would say there are many, many, there are a number of committee members that I don't know. Um or or I've seen their names before, but I don't.
I, yeah, other thing I should say first is, I just want to thank them all for volunteering and asking to do it once again, so. I wouldn't contest any of them.
Yeah.
Um we're gonna vote it, I just want to highlight. When the staggered terms for climate change and energy, do you want to keep it as it is one-year terms for everybody? Or did you want to go to the staggered term?
So in the establishment of the committees, what does it say?
It says one-year terms, I think, could vote.
But this is my thought, keep it as it is and then as part of our evaluation.
That's what I'm getting at when I said that.
Yeah. Got it, finish.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Okay.
And Jim, I didn't take it personally, then in both cases, on climate change, resilience and energy and sustainability, you put me in for just a year. You were thinking about throwing me out on my ear, is that it?
Working on it, yeah. If you look at it, it it lines up perfectly with a reelection. So to be clear, there are six on here that are in white that have not responded, so therefore those will not be considered in this vote.
Yes.
Next time, right?
And I would reach out to them again.
Okay.
For the next meeting.
So I I move that we appoint all, all people in green on the list that um that. Uh had been presented to us and and for the terms as shown, with the exception of members of the energy and sustainability. And the climate change resilience committee, in which case they will all be for simply one fiscal year. Um with term ending at six thirty twenty twenty-four.
Oh, I see. He changed the terms, but he made you the one to do that.
All right, I get all the discussion. Yeah, all right, I'll favor.
Bye.
Bye.
He's giving you a hard time, dude.
It also lined up very well. It literally was just one, two, three, one, two, three.
Okay, next item, request for authorization of invasive species interns work on town in parcels. Um oh, I didn't even check to see if Michelle was on here. Oh, that's right, all right. So um do either of you have any questions on this, or?
Which end are we going?
Where I'm doing now, we're back in order. I I do want to say, I think it's good that the conservation commission is, you know, walking the talk. And doing all the proper filing and everything, you know, and there's a lot of paperwork, but they're they're following their own rules, so I'm appreciative of that.
Yeah, I think it's good.
Yeah, do you guys have any questions on this, or are we ready to vote?
I'm I'm ready to vote. I would move that we um.
So we're authorizing the interns work.
That's the word I was looking for, authorizing the um. Following of an RDA and the interns work.
So we're actually. So we're actually authorizing town manager to sign an NOI. Oh, well, actually, that's what it says in the agenda, but I do remember seeing RDA. Okay, all right, sorry. You can ignore my correction.
That's okay, because I was still trying to put it all together here. I read through it, but now I just want to make sure my motion makes sense. Yeah, so authorize the town manager to sign the RDA for basis for the interns to hand call and cut invasion plans on a few parcels in town with handfuls.
Any further discussion?
No.
On favor? Item E is request for authorization of invasive species management firms work on town in a parcel and operate the town manager to sign the NOI for following conservation commission. So this is as a result of the town meeting or an article to authorize funding for this. You want to say anything about it, Greg?
I think it's a, it's an opportunity to make a dent in in what is omnipresent issue all the way around town. And and you know, this will, you know, only make a dent, but hopefully it will you know, demonstrate to other people that 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 we can actually have an impact on on the way invasive plant species are are taking over so much land in town, not just municipally owned land, but but privately owned land as well.
Angus, is this in terms of the contract management, would that be the conservation agent or is that your office that would be?
It would be the conservation agent, although let's see, the we we work really closely together on the RFQ. And I have been looped in on the vendor selection. I I didn't, I didn't have anything last week. I didn't go to that. Just because of time, but so basically. So let's see, the this one, the drafts NOI wasn't created yet.
Right.
As of, as of.
So they're just looking for authorization for the firm to do the work and review the sun.
Yeah, but in terms of the oversight of the actual contractor, that was one of the things that in working with Michelle to finalize the RFQ, we did designate the conservation agent because there were a number in an earlier draft, there were a number of references to, you know, something for the satisfaction of talent. You know, before, but you know, to make sure it's clear who in the town and who is the agent who is empowered to make some of those decisions, so.
Great.
So is this the proposals that are in the back of the packet?
Yeah, yeah, the proposals are kind of just informational backgrounds. But yeah, this is, this would be to basically authorize the work that we're going to be hiring.
There are two different proposals to confirm. It just goes in one?
No, no, we're in the midst of that.
So you've got to evaluate the two.
Correct.
And we're going to vote you to pick either one?
No, we're we're just voting to authorize them to work on town land and for Angus to sign the NOI for the conservation commission.
Right, and and we can't, Michelle can't finalize the notice of intent because the different vendors offer different. Then that's why, yeah, she can't write until we select a vendor. Because we don't know exactly what work is going to be done. But we didn't want to wait three weeks to get the NOI process started with the council.
So we're just authorizing Angus to sign an NOI for the town.
I would, I would, I would, no, it's just. I like the, you know, the docking is kind of curious. I would have had questions on those, but it's a different issue.
On the, on the.
Proposals.
Yeah.
You could probably, is this the conservation commission deciding or just?
Well, like the one proposal. The 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 award of the contract is actually mine as the procurement authority. So I'm going to do that based on the feedback that I've given by the selection team.
Do you want to ask the questions now?
Well, one proposal is only looking to do Riverbank. Right. Current use eighteen five, and the other one doesn't even state a number, so.
So it says the full amount. So from the.
It's not a proposal, full amount, you know.
From the discussion we had when we opened up the contracts, Michelle, we said it would be the full amount proposed usage. That wasn't explicitly stated in in the proposals. But one is only for Riverbanks, and then the other proposal gave us a couple of options, what they know they could do with the full amount.
The full amount being what was approved.
Twenty thousand dollars.
I guess my other comment, this is the one they talk about, the what do you do with the stuff when they pull it? They say you can remove it in plastic bags, you can leave it there to decay, and seemed to me it's better to remove it if you're trying to eradicate it, just sort of nothing. And nothing about it, but that's what I would do.
Yeah, it's, yeah, well, as they point out, there's already so much seed bank there in the soil that it doesn't, you know, it probably makes more sense just to leave it right there or to decompose. And that was their perspective. And and personally, I agree with that. That's the way I deal with things. You know, you leaving there to decay, there's already so much seed bank in the soil that the additional material you're leaving there is pretty much irrelevant. And and it adds significantly to the cost to have to transport it.
Well, they didn't reference that. That's what I was going to ask, if there's no cost.
Actually, I think in both cases, they did note that.
Well, I was talking about shipping and, you know, so whatever, that's.
Yeah.
We're off topic, so let's just. Have you made a motion?
Not yet. I made a motion. I I was going to say I'd make a motion just like Wendy Reddick. Which is, which is giving the town manager the authority to file the NOI.
And authorize the contractor to work in town.
Correct, yeah, thank you, just like that.
All right.
Good job.
All in favor? All right, the next item is G, referral from Parks and Rec Commission regarding proposed updates to twenty twenty three summer rec wages. So as outlined in the packet, this budget was proposed by the summer rec directors and approved by Park and Rec and presented to the select board in February, and it was approved. So they're now asking for a change in that. And I, you know, following the wage study, our position has been that the only changes in compensation will be related if the job duties change. So I think Park and Rec Commission wasn't aware of that fact. I went to their meeting and spoke with the chair after and explained that, that, you know, we we don't, once we're approving the wage, unless there's something that's changing the position, we don't approve increases. I also reached out to the employee in question and explained the same thing to her. So that being said, you know, we want to discuss it and have a different opinion about how to handle it, that's.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
They're both understanding of it.
Yes, I'm not particularly happy in terms of the employee, but understood. And I I said, you know, if this is something that you feel like needs to be changed for next year, that's the time to do it when you're proposing the budget, writing the job description, and I'm will be happy to talk about it at that point.
Yeah, and and in that case, if if there are two different salaries, then there should be two different job descriptions.
And that was my only takeaway from the document itself. I understand it's sort of gotten stratified this year, but what about the descriptions of the jobs and everything? So if they do that next year, I can understand the logic of it, but to do it this year is not appropriate. I would agree.
So we need to vote or?
Yeah, well, I do want to, there were the, a couple of the other changes. The one was the second code director, which was within the the budgeted range that was initially voted back June, but also the counselors, the initial vote had provided for two different tiers, a sixteen dollar and a sixteen fifty seven. And I would recommend that that third tier, the seventeen fourteen be added as for many three or more years of experience. So that's something that that I would recommend that change.
So this is a refinement of the.
Well, it's on the stone, page fifty four, yeah, 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 basically a refinement, because I mean, I I basically put through what was initially proposed and which was the two tiers. And then you know, there was, when the time came for offer writers, it was, well, what about the dollars? And I said, well, that wasn't in the proposal. So I, so I proposed we basically this, what I'm recommending, the sixteen dollars, sixteen fifty seven, seventeen fourteen are all tied to the, even though these aren't formally on the steps, those are all steps.
Oh, I see.
So that was, that was where I came up with those numbers.
Okay.
But that way, there's a recognition for the for the program staff that, you know, this is year one rate, year two rate, and then the year three or more rate. So the initial budget had provided two, two levels.
Okay, and so this will be part of the framework going forward?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So for this, yeah, for this summer.
And then the.
Correct, yeah.
It's still within by now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well.
Yeah, so the the whole point of this is to make it consistent with the wage study.
Yeah, no, I was just unclear about when when it was being recorded.
Yeah, so this was, it's odd because it starts in June, but the fiscal year starts in July. I mean, so we're always doing it back in February, so this comes, yeah. And did you, either of you want to add anything else?
No, the only thing I wanted to just ensure is that these, the numbers will then go up with increasing call for for subsequent years.
Okay, so is a vote needed for? Angus, the.
I mean, I think if you're, if you are agreeable to the
To your recommendations.
Town manager column on page fifty four of the packet, I think I'll vote to that if I think it will be helpful.
Okay, I've moved that we accept the salary shown in the town manager column on in the on page fifty four of the packet.
Okay, all favor? Bye. Request for approval of FY twenty four holiday recognitions.
This is something we do every time, every year around this time, it's actually used more like early July, but we haven't done so.
Awesome.
That's easiest. And Chris, that's the new board number. This is just.
What pages are they?
It's on page fifty seven of your packet. The the holidays are all set out on the personnel policy. It's really just a matter of what day they're recognized as typically very easy, but every now and then there's one where it's a judgment call. So so I started doing this my last job, and I've done it every year here to just do it once for the whole year instead of, you know, the holiday approaches, you start getting questions, I'd rather just set it up. We have the one question mark in here, which is a question mark every year, is Friday after Thanksgiving, has not been recognized as a holiday. But it typically, the the tradition has been to authorize closure, but that's typically not a decision that's made until closer to the date, so that's why that's marked as a.
Well, it's the line to the library. The town office and public works is closed.
Correct, yeah.
My question is, it's similar to that, is you've got July fourth is on a Tuesday. What happens on Monday? I got to believe most people.
If they don't work, it's.
Is town offices.
Oh, yeah, we're open, oh, yeah.
I mean, you can always edit the charts.
Ah, there are twelve holidays. Yeah, Juneteenth was added last year. They have one.
Oh, pretty good, Chris.
Yeah, it's the same as every March, it's, it's the Patriots' Day.
Public private sector.
Yeah, I, I, I went, I went.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I was just curious.
All right, any comments or thoughts on this?
What are we voting this?
We, do we need to vote on this?
Under the town manager acts, the town manager is responsible for carrying forward personnel policy as set by the town, by the select one. So while the holidays are set personnel policy, it's, it's, it's debatable. We've done it. I don't see there's any downside, and it just, it it just it's, it's just good to make it official.
Okay, so for clarity, let me ask.
Yeah.
The Friday after Thanksgiving, it says closed. That's not a holiday, though, is it?
It is in the DPW compact, it is, has now been put in as a holiday in the.
So that makes thirteen then, doesn't it?
Yeah, for for public workers.
Okay. So what about everybody else?
They're not, they're not union contracts, and they're not.
So town hall is closed, that people taking a vacation day and not getting paid are?
No, town hall has typically been closed.
It's not it.
Yes, basically true, yes.
What does that mean, true, like a snow day?
It's a, it's a, it's a paid day.
So it's a holiday.
So there's a
But it's not an official.
Handful of people who actually work Fridays. A lot of the hourly staff who work in town offices do not work on Fridays. Their normal work week does not include Friday. This is changing a bit. But first, there was, for a long time, the only people scheduled to work on Fridays were salaried employees. That has changed now. We do, we have now added a couple of full time, hourly employees. So I mean, we could, we could come back and discuss that one in more.
I'm just not clear on what it means. It says closed. It's either a halt, either you get paid or not.
You're not letting work, are you? Still paying.
Yeah, I don't know what it means, I guess. I don't know.
Should we revisit this?
Yeah, let's revisit that.
Okay.
I just don't understand. I mean, I don't, for all this.
So you want to know if employees are getting paid or having to use our time to.
If it says.
You you can close a facility and not pay it to holiday deck. You can do that. Companies close for a week and they don't necessarily pay employees for a week. It depends on whether you have paid time off.
Yeah, I want to take another look at this footnote, because I wrote this footnote a year ago. And I want to make sure that that's still applicable.
I just want to make sure if we're voting it, people think they're getting off and getting paid, and they find out they're not, that we're not, they'll just come back to this and say you voted it. We better be clear.
So much for.
So much for what?
Having an easy item on the agenda.
It was easier than the ducks in Ash Street.
All right, item I is meeting minutes. I, have you guys read all of those?
I didn't have to. I wasn't here. I don't approve any of them.
Rick, have you read? I didn't.
I, I, I actually did.
I have verification for you.
I can vote on it.
I can vote on it. It is the the way minutes.
It's a policy, I know.
The body that is taking the action.
But I can't verify them at all, that's all I'm saying.
You've watched the video. You've watched the video.
Three times, it was so good. I gave them four star ratings, too. So I I actually do, I actually do have, so the first one, I had no comment.
So before we leave the first one, on item D, page fifty nine.
Sorry, February sixth. Correct?
Yeah. Yeah.
Item D.
Item D, the second to last sentence says amending the capital planning bylaw. And so that should be capital improvements bylaw or? And item J, the governor is just going to spell. You had nothing on that one?
I had nothing on that one.
Okay. Do you want to move to approve those?
Sure, I'm moved to approve the minutes for February sixth, twenty twenty three.
Amended?
Has amended.
Chris, are you voting or not?
I will, I will second it though.
Okay, second. All was in favor?
Bye.
All right, the minutes of March thirteenth.
Okay, March thirteenth. So an item G. I think it reads, the way it reads currently, yeah, so it's the incoming challenge of PFA mitigation. I think that probably should read the upcoming challenge of PFAS, PFAS mitigation.
Which item was that?
Item G. Yeah, it it currently reads the incoming challenge of PFA mitigation, and I think that probably should be upcoming as opposed to incoming. Because I don't think it's a hassle. Although it might feel like everyone is going to pay for it, but and it's PFAS as opposed to PFA.
I think we'll back to item E, page sixty. The reason I abstained on that is because there was no answer to the question about the stipends. So just a sentence can be put in there, so, you know, maybe in the in the discussion. Item. Item E. It just says I abstained, but that was the reason, because I was pending the border water commission's discussion of whether they were going to do like the stipends. Um, do what the stipends.
Actually, I did have one question.
Sure. Yeah, that's misspelled also on the. Chris Wild.
No.
James and Rob Phillips. I think it's, that was Bob James, who's under the water commission.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, I I, yeah, that was in my notes. Yeah. But he's not on the FinCom. Well, he is, he, we just reappointed him for next term.
All right, Rick, did you have anything else on that one?
Um. No. That's that's three thirteen, March thirteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I would move to approve the minutes of March thirteenth, twenty twenty three as amended.
Second. All those in favor?
Uh, just a quick question, so I'm seeing Bob James is later on that list.
Yeah.
So instead of Don James, was there a difference? Or was there Dan Innes?
Well, no, but his, his, no, his name is on the list though. Dan's name is on the list.
No, it's not.
No, there's, it says Chris Wild. Don James.
Oh, wait, oh, oh, actually, oh, I'm sorry, so, okay, I didn't pick it up there, I picked it up on the two minutes later, two sets of minutes later. There's a similar thing where the name Don, Dan James, Dan James comes in. In the participants.
Okay.
I don't remember him. Dan being there though.
Where?
He was, March thirteenth, so I.
I'll look at the video and I'll follow.
Yeah, okay.
Just just put Dan in, we're good. We thought Danny was there.
Yeah.
He was.
He was.
I mean. He's turning them out as quickly as, he doesn't know the faces yet.
Pretty amazing that he's doing that well.
Well, as you said, that turning them up quickly. Is that gonna happen? Are they gonna happen quicker now that you have?
So ideally, this is, this is the catch-up, so once this is done, we will be able to keep active.
Not about everybody else, but I haven't, you know, once the meeting's over, my memory starts fading pretty quick, it's kind of half-life. So, it was great back a year or two ago when we were doing events that were two years old.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, did we vote on that? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, um.
March twenty seventh.
Have you reviewed these carefully enough that I can abstain because they haven't seen them, or do you think we should wait?
Um, I've read them over, I think thoroughly, and, you know, I caught everything I caught. I can't say what you would catch that I wouldn't.
Okay.
That I didn't. Um, so, perfect bad as you may.
All right.
You know, they're just minutes. And and there won't be.
People do go back and look at them, I don't want to have something used against me that I didn't.
Right, well, there was a thing that Wendy said. Uh, no, I think they're, it was all pretty benign, I think.
All right, Chris, do you have any comments in reading them, or did you not read them?
I skimmed them, I didn't read them, because I wasn't present.
Okay, fair enough. All right, Rick, your call.
Okay, so on the March twenty seventh meeting minutes, item C. Where currently reads Parker motion to add the replacement of the Rogers Road. Rogers Street, that should be actually, Rogers Street pulled to the agenda, um. I think there should be a note added that the utility rep indicated that he expected that the three-phase power line would be retained.
Three-phase power line.
Yeah, uh, yeah, the utility rep indicated that he expected that the three-phase power line would be retained, and three phases. Three letter, you know, nu- number three hyphen phase PHASE. So basically means that you're able to transmit a lot more power. Um, so I would move that. That we approve the minutes of March twenty seventh, twenty twenty three as as, uh. As as modified.
All right, I'll second it. All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, I'll abstain. All right, April fifth.
Um. Okay, April fifth, I had no comments for. So I guess, um. Always good to me.
Okay.
If you trust me.
Yeah.
Okay, then I would move that we, uh, approve the minutes for April fifth.
Right, second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I'll abstain. Uh, April ten. Yeah, so our candidates can be there, we have Daniel Innes, Dan James, Bob Phillips. So that's, that's us. Seventh member.
Yeah.
Yes.
Two people, obviously.
Strike Dan James. Yeah, I think you just. Get rid of the name Dan James.
Former town clerk. Right, Rick, anything in here?
Okay, no, and so, um, nothing else, um, in those minutes. Um, so I moved that we approved the, uh, minutes for April tenth, twenty twenty three, um, as amended.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I'll abstain.
And then I had nothing, uh, noted nothing in the minutes for April thirteenth. So.
We had a lot of meetings in April.
Yeah, yeah, we did.
Yeah.
More than I want to meet, uh, one, one a week for a couple of weeks.
Right. Okay.
And that's, that's, that's not even how long, like, we still have.
Okay.
And so we have moved that we approved the minutes for April thirteenth, unless we. You know, well, I guess we've done that before, but you're, you're good, I mean.
I'm trusting you, Rick.
Okay. Wow, really.
Right, second. Abstain, sorry. All right, and that's it on minutes?
Yep.
Okay. How many is your update?
All right, first update is, uh, West Creek Ridge, uh, grant application didn't get submitted on Friday. And, uh. Uh, I included just the narrative, uh, support letters in the packet, but it's not around separately, the complete application. It didn't export very cleanly, it's this online portal, very, uh, you know, so. But but all the content is there, and I think it came together nicely, it was, uh. Not as, it, there really was not, uh, much transfer from the twenty nineteen application. Uh, obviously, we buy it back in twenty nineteen, got the grant then, so, you know, at the start of the process, I hope there'd be a lot of. Kind of cutting and pasting saves some time, it didn't really go that way, both because they really, obviously, the project changed quite a bit over the course of four years. Um, but the, uh, the grant application is completely different, um. And I don't know if people have a chance to work through this, but I I really think the state is. Looking for every project to check every box, you know, how many times can you say this will not create jobs? This will not create housing, this is not a environmental justice area, you know, it's just kind of like, they kind of beat you. Each project, and it's like, it's a bridge, we need the bridge, there are good reasons for me to bridge, anyhow, so, so it was, uh. Uh, but I think it came together nicely, I was just thrilled with the support letters, we had thirty-four support letters. Good tremendous, so, so it was great.
And there was actually some good original content.
Oh, yeah, yeah, people really, really, uh, put a lot into that, on, on fairly, uh, really short notice, so we'd be really thankful for that. Thankful for the support, obviously, of our, uh, state senator, state rep, and made weird coming through the ladder as well as, uh. You know, some department heads and, and a lot of residents, uh, many who are affiliated with committees, many who are not, and just. Took the time to to send the letter of support, so, uh, you know, we definitely feel good about the application, as you know, we don't know. If we'll get the extension of our current grant, so if we do, then this is moot, but one way or the other, we have two irons in the fire. And hopefully, one or the other will work out. And, uh, another open question, uh, which, uh, we spoke to our brand administrators. Uh, a few weeks ago, was an unanswered question was whether. Um, if we don't get the extension, and they do consider this new grant. Will we be eligible for the full million dollars, or would we be capped at the net balance of what remains unspent, our current grant? So there's a lot of variables, but, um, we're doing what we can to get, uh, state, you know, more state support for this project. Uh, in the meantime, I sent that around, uh. Uh, notice earlier today, we received, uh, note this morning from the district engineer at DOT, Paul Stedman. He had, uh, seen an article in the newspaper about the bridge and about our efforts for the grant, and had sent us a note. Encouraging us to apply for the Mastop Small Bridge Grant, uh, we've had a number of back and forths today, uh, because we've been previously. Advised that we wouldn't be eligible for that because, um, Newburyport got a small bridge grant back in twenty eighteen for the same project. Uh, but we have got clarification that we would in fact be eligible to apply, uh, because it's a different fiscal year. Uh, and the construction grants you can apply once per fiscal year, so not only are we eligible to apply. Uh, for the Mastop Small Bridge Grant due June thirtieth, but Newburyport is as well. And we received confirmation from the city engineer lead today today that they do intend to apply, so by June thirtieth, uh. Each of Westonbury and and Newburyport will apply for a small bridge grant, and. Best case scenario, that could bring two half-million dollar grants to the table, which would still leave us with a fairly sizable funding gap. But would obviously. Be somewhat a big help, so, uh, so that's really the update there, we will be watching closely what the. Uh, city council does this Thursday, uh, in their review of the proposed EPS budget capital articles, um. I think it's, it's, you know, be very important to see the city, you know, put. Put some local funding toward this project, uh, and we're gonna get a finish line, so. Uh, that's a meeting, uh, to take place this Thursday at six over at City Hall, um.
Yeah, I'm not able to attend that either, I mean, you guys are both out of town.
Yeah, I'll be able to attend.
Yeah, I mean, how critical is it that somebody, I mean, we're just observing, right, are we?
Yeah, and I, I mean, they're reviewing the entire DPS budget and capital articles, and they haven't booked for two hours. I don't know if they really actually stopped the meetings today, but it's actually on the calendar for six to eight. Uh, I have to assume their meetings go more than two hours, but I, I suspect if we were there, we wouldn't be given the floor anyway. I think, I think what we can do is put something compelling in writing, uh, you know, I think we. You know, we've done a lot to to try to raise the profile of this project, uh, with the council, not just the mayor's office, so, I think, uh. I, I think I told you all, I have my niece's high school graduation, so I can't be there either, um.
Do you know if they're recorded, the meetings? I'm, I'm just curious to hear the study.
Well, again, I'd be really curious to hear this guy.
Yeah, yeah.
Same thing.
Okay.
Uh, but we'll be, uh, getting a support letter out tomorrow, I'll work with Jared to run us the language of that, but there's. So much content, I think, I think the key is gonna be write something succinct and, uh. Um, and that would be, you know. Put in some hyperlinks if people want all the detail, but.
Great.
Uh, next item, you can, uh, direct search process, we, we, uh, have completed a number of second round interviews. Uh, we've also had, uh. Uh, a new application come in, uh, fairly recently from, uh, you know, candidate who appears highly qualified. So we have invited that person in for a first round interview next, uh, later this week. Uh, so basically, you know, in the thick of that process, it's, uh, you know, one of the more important appointments. Um, you know, staff positions that we have, so we wanna, uh, get it right and take the time that we need to do that. Uh, in the meantime, things are going very well, as you know, from, uh, you know, the board's actions, uh, you know, a month or four, five or six weeks ago. Uh, a couple of, uh, staff positions have taken on additional responsibilities in the absence of the director. Uh, that's gone very well, it has, you know, created a major workload item, in particular on purchasing and procurement. Uh, personally involved with about twenty different RFPs, RFQs, contracts, you know. Addendums, uh, it's, it's a big. Actually, it's lasted four or five weeks, but the work is getting done, uh, it's getting done well, and, uh. Uh, I definitely recognize, uh, you know, the staff that we have for really stepping up and, uh. You know. Doing whatever needs to be done to 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 keep things moving forward, uh, the combination of, uh, town meeting and the appropriate. Things that were loaded there, as well as a lot of the seasonal work, uh, really time-sensitive stuff, in terms of, you know, um. You know, highway and and roads, uh, were a lot of contracts that needed to get awarded, signed. And, uh, it's really been a major effort the last, uh, the last five weeks, so the actions, uh, you know, are former chief of procurement. So.
And so we're on track to, um, spend all the money as things.
We are, yeah, we, we are, although I don't know if you saw the same email last night. So we got an email from Mast DOT on, I don't know, Thursday or Friday. They've. Waives for June thirtieth deadline.
Oh, no kidding, wow.
So we've been turning ourselves inside out to use this funding by June thirtieth, and they sent out an email late last week to all communities.
Oh, they upset it last month?
Right, 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 yeah, that's very frustrating.
My guess is they've got a lot of screaming towns.
They did.
And, and, uh, then they were just. So, so is there no deadline?
Because I think it was after the packet, but, yeah.
Is there, there's no deadline now?
Uh, I, it basically said, yeah, there's, they're actually gonna cut us a check for our unspent balance. We can expect to see if we receive the money by, I think it said in mid-July, so they're actually gonna front us. Any unspent money, we may not have any, because we've been hustling, and yeah, I think we probably will have it all spent by June thirtieth. The email specified that, you know, all the reporting requirements remain the same, so there's still each municipality still has to. Document certify that every, every penny was spent in accordance with the rules, but you can send that documentation. Later, you know, because you'll, you'll have received the money, um, so. Much ado, well, right. But it did cost, uh, you know, I did like clear my desk for like frac seal and contracts and pavement striking contracts.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I, I have the account of the Amber Lash for RFQ, we went to like version three on that, but it's not ready for primetime, so. Uh, there's a lot of work that goes into these performance.
Yeah. Wow, that's crazy.
It's been crazy, yeah.
Just waiting that date though, it's like.
Yeah, and and I mean, Wendy's right, like, really, couldn't you have told us a month ago?
Right.
Even any day was, I mean, it really was like a week ago, yeah, even a week, it like affects. Three hundred and fifty one cities and towns. Turn themselves inside out to meet this deadline. That's the statement. Uh, next item, I didn't have anything in the back, uh, packet, I just wanted to keep you apprised, because we are continuing to put in, you know, uh. A good amount of effort on the, uh, work with Greenbelt Land Grant, uh, Michelle has been doing, uh, a lot of that work. But she and I have also set up, uh. A sidewalk with Vanessa for next. Because the next, I think it might be two weeks from, from our. Um, uh, but we want to really. Walk from Mill Pond to Archolais, we want to walk up to where the, uh, connection to the Deer Run would be. To really make sure that, you know, we, you know, are fully aligned in terms of how we're representing things, as you know, from our discussion a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we are looking at, uh, presenting that Mill Pond is the primary access and the primary. Uh, parking for this new land, and looking at it really as an extension of Mill Pond. Not from a management plan standpoint, for for different reasons, I think that it, you know, will make sense to have a separate management plan. Not intuitively, but we'll get into the details. Uh, as far as parking and access, it's definitely gonna be, uh, and and Greenbelt knows this, it's very important that. There be actual parking and actual access, uh, to some extent, uh, into the new property, um. Not across the whole property, it's not gonna be a, uh, obviously acceptable route right through Mill Pond, that's not gonna happen, that never was. Uh, but we want to make sure that we've got, you know, we kind of ground truth what we're representing in the grant application. In addition, on the, uh, you know, the agenda item with other Greenbelt properties. Uh, as of, uh, July first, the conservation agent's hours are gonna go to full time, that'll be the first time in the town's history that we'll have a full-time conservation agent. And, uh, you know, if you've got a backlog a mile long, that's gonna take a while to to, uh, to work through. But some of the things that she and I are talking about are wanting to really work with Greenbelt to tie up some loose ends. Because there's a lot of loose ends, um, you know, everywhere from, uh, obviously, the access to Coffin Street with the, the, you know. Parking on the trail, there's the, uh, river access, uh, issues that are still really, um. You know, somewhat in limbo, uh, there's issues of how's the parking gonna be configured for our trip of the woods. And we really want to sit with Greenbelt and go through each of the properties, what are the commitments that have been made, what's the status, and just make sure that. We can get Michelle, you know, fully plugged in, uh, because most of it. We can get Michelle, you know, fully plugged in, uh, because most of these were put together before she got here or Justin feels arriving. Uh, so she's kind of gotten bits of background, but we really wanna get her to where she knows. All the, you know, kind of history of what we're trying to get done, so we can really work with. Greenbelt methodical way to, to advance these, uh. Uh, to completion.
That would be really great.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, uh, yeah, cause it's, you know, we, we do a lot of this, uh, there's a lot of correspondence between. You know, my office in Greenbelt or Michelle's office in Greenbelt, but it's all kind of this issue or this issue or this issue, and we wanna sit down and have like. Everything in one place so we can, um, you know, really be clear on our expectations, the community's expectations and, and get some time when it's. Uh, when things are gonna happen.
And when is the grant due?
Uh, the thirteenth. And there will be a basically complete review draft, um. Uh, shared with the Concom for their meeting on the twentieth, and so you guys will get a copy of that as well, so. Uh, once we have like a complete draft, we'll, we'll circulate that for comment. That's gonna be a good three weeks ahead of the due date, so. Uh, next item, just informational, we have, we have three proposals received from the Page School, uh, RFQ. Uh, and Rick is part of that selection kind of working group. There's a meeting this Wednesday morning, uh, three, we got all morning booked. Uh, you know, for up to fifty minute interview with each of the three. Christine Wallace has gone through each and found that they all meet the, part of the minimum qualifications, so each was granted an interview. Those will be the assume. We have a terrific, uh, kind of advisory group assembled, including, uh, Lisa Grammer. Our building inspector, Christine Wallace, um, Rick, and uh. We've got, I believe Greg Hatten is, uh, is gonna be part of the page. And uh, I might be missing someone, but it's a really good group of people, so I think we're gonna come out with. And we've, we've been working with town council on the kind of method to rank the proposals because the RFQ sets out kind of a numerical. Rating system, uh, so each of the raters will begin a, a grid to fill out. I'll present that to me as chief procurement officer. Uh, I'll create a kind of aggregated score, do some reference checks to make sure everything uh, aligns with, with what was represented. And uh, we should be in a position to, uh. Uh, you know, award a contract on that this month to get that work out. Uh, next item, uh, we talked about it earlier, but I just wanted to keep you aware that this, this goes through the. You know, our P for that they could speed the management work. And uh, yeah, you can see actually Page one, twenty eight, just right at the top, I mean, that, that gives, you know. To the satisfaction of the town, you know, before this one, I wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Just cause those are the questions that come up if things are unclear. So anyhow, this, this, uh, RP went through probably. Uh, three different drafts before this finalized issue. We got two proposals. And there's a, uh, advisory group that Rick is part of and Jim said it on the meeting as well last week, and they'll be. Making a recommendation on which it's the better, um, uh, value for the town's money. Uh, and then finally, the, just to update on other active projects and initiatives, I think I mentioned before that we're now. Uh, having, uh, weekly puddles, uh, finance and administration department heads and staff. And uh, every other week, we're doing the same thing with, with planning and development. And uh, I've gotta get the same thing going with two other groupings of department heads, both infrastructure and public services, but I just haven't had the. The time to get those going. I have the emails keyed up. I just, I can't hit send until I can actually. Follow through and it's just too busy as well, so, uh, but anyhow, this gives you a glimpse of. Between those two groupings, uh.
A lot of stuff.
It's a lot of stuff. I, I wish that voters in this town would, would download this and read this because I think that. I just, you know, all we hear about is what's not getting done, and I understand that. But I think that we have nothing to apologize for in terms of what we are getting done, and I will put our productivity. Pound for pound against any community in this town. You know, we really have a great team. They're working very, very hard, doing really good work every hour and every day. So obviously, you know, you hear something about what's not getting done, that's part of how we sector, I understand that, but, but I do think that, uh. You know, if people take the time to look at what is getting done, uh, it's a lot. And, you know, we're doing quite a lot, we're doing a lot of things with procurement. That, you know, maybe in the old days didn't happen, and, and some of it, as you know, and as we've talked about over the years, and it's an intentional decision. Some of it goes beyond what we have to do. An engineer, you do not have to go through thirty B. We go through these processes because. We believe it gives us, um. You know, a, a better outcome in terms of both knowing who's out there in the universe of, of, uh. Respective vendors, it gives respective vendors a fair shot at the work, which I think is, is appropriate when you're still probably money. And depending on the type of, uh, procurement, if it's an RFQ, it gives the town the ability to nego- negotiate scope and. Uh, contract to make sure you're getting less value. So there's some things that we're, we do that do spend, you know, they do take time. Uh, but it's, it really is the right way to do it. We're not depending on this on any of it, so.
Yeah, the thing, thing I guess I'm really happy with is the fact that people are working as a team and that there's, you know, the, the. This, the problem of siloing has pretty much gone away.
Yeah.
We, we've made a lot of progress for the last year and a half or two, and really, and it's just getting better all the time. Uh, I think this last, uh, you know, ironically, I mean, Wayne was a huge part of that. He was a huge. Part of building team and bringing people together, but in his house, in his absence, uh, and also promoting Rebecca. Obviously creating that support position to help me kind of, you know, if you see that a lot to. To clear a ton of stuff, so I can be more focused with my time. You can see my desk, yeah, so, and then, and then, you know, Jim and, uh. Uh, the assistant town clerk Max was really, his productivity is, is like dizzy. We, we got a good team that we're, we're running and also there's some, um, this, I think it's all gonna get better.
So planning and development includes. Yeah. Oh, you have it down below. Who's in that planning and development group?
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna say, our, our group doesn't even have a list.
No.
It's too many things on the list.
I did, I did do, I am working on improved format for my, uh, Chris, Christine Wallace, it kind of looks better.
Okay, so the last page is a separate item. That's just D P W.
Yeah, the last page was actually, I put this together as a hybrid of both, um. Christine Wallace's project list, which you've seen several versions up to the last six or eight months. With the operating manual that Wayne put together in, in his last month of the job. I kind of put together a lot of that just on one page, and this was really initially done. For the second round interviews, uh, just at the, at the discussion point with the applicants to kind of. Just talk to, and we certainly didn't cover everything or try to cover everything, but it was a good way to. To give people a sense of the universe of projects, but also to give applicants the opportunity to share with. Uh, with Rick and I, cause it was Rick and I who conducted the second round interviews, thoughts that they have or experience they have on, on different types of work. Which includes everything you would expect in a D P W, but also does include some things that. In some towns may or may not be traditionally considered public works projects, so. What we find with, with, uh, you know, external applicants, we want them to know coming in and internal applicants. The breadth of the job and what it covers, and so, uh, I put this together quickly kind of for that purpose. And then I thought I'd share it with you, cause I, I think it's, it's, I don't think it's comprehensive, but it's pretty close. It covered a lot. Uh, and I think it's, uh. And as you, you well know, you know, it may look like just a list of a bunch of bullet points, but there's a. Quite a lot of substance behind each and every one of these items, yeah.
Great. Any other updates?
Uh, not for me, although, you know, if there's anything on any one of these, it's, you know, it's all in that one, cause it's in your packet, so. If you're curious about where anything stands in more detail, you can certainly ask.
Yeah, yeah, actually, it's. I'm, I'm not in a hurry for this at all, but I was just curious, where, where do things stand as far as, um. The, I know we're waiting for, or I think we're waiting for delivery, the furniture, and, and then this table going upstairs. Yeah, the reconfiguration of both here and.
Yeah, so the, uh, we, we heard last week that the chairs are in the warehouse, but not yet been scheduled for delivery. The, uh, new, uh, desks are being, uh, constructed. They're not yet constructed. We're gonna be, it's in process, but we'll be notified once before they're stained or, you know, before the finish is put on. Uh, I think that we don't have a firm timeline, and I'm hoping to be within a month. Uh, we do have a mover identified to move this, uh, table. Uh, but we're not gonna obviously get them to green light till we have the delivery date on the furniture. So basically, it's. It is something that, uh, both Jim's office is involved in Kate and Brown Street, it's in touch with the, the manufacturer at least every week, just checking him. Um, and so right now it's been waiting, but once, once it falls into place, I think a lot of things are gonna move. And uh, we did get a third, um, lockable file cabinet over there, we just gotta take out of the box with the idea that each of you will be given a key. So that you'll have your own, in addition to the lockable desk, you'll have more file storage if you choose to use it, you or your, your successors over the years. Will each have your own lockable file cabinet, uh, to give you more space to, to kind of make up for what you lost.
And where will that go over there?
Uh, I'm not sure. We'll see how it lays out because we'll have the, 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 the three desks and the two desks, and then there's also gonna be a new table. Uh, that's, that's kind of sized to go over there, so we'll see once it's all in, kind of, how, how it lays out best.
Chris, do you have any questions on any of the updates? Okay, Rob, did you have something?
By the way, those are great file cabinets.
Are they? Okay, very good.
So I had three questions. They're, they're all coming from the same place, up in announcements. You have the Housing Opportunities Initiative slash MBTA Communities. Question number one, is that one thing or two related? Housing Opportunities Initiative slash MBTA Communities. Is, is that? Is that the one thing that's the MBTA or?
It's, the housing initiatives is a, a comprehensive thing. There's four different housing things going on.
Right, exactly, and then, and then in.
MBTA is one of them.
It is one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is, that is correct. I, I will tell you, so, so what I received that's up, up here on the screen. And what was put out to the, to the web was, was from the planning, planning department, I referred to the Housing Opportunities Initiative. It doesn't actually say anything about MBTA Communities. I made the decision and put the language on the agenda. To, to put in slash MBTA Communities, cause I felt it was important.
That's what they were hired for, right?
Correct, yeah, so I thought it was important to have something to specifically reference that that's being supported by the.
Question number one, so you, they're, they're related. Question number two, design workshop. Does that relate back to either of these or design?
Yeah, so, and, and it's here up on the screen, I don't know how, but this, this went out on the website as well about a week ago.
Yeah, did you send me the annotated packet?
It's on, it's up on that.
Is it? Cause I, I found the agenda of nothing, okay.
Oh, it is, yeah, it was unpublished for about a half hour today. Max Todd or something, I, I.
For, so the third thing, this is what I was. So, um. Is your point as it relates to the MBTA? And the state and what they're intending to accomplish through that, is there a time where? The select board and FinCom and planning board can have a discussion on this because. There may be some concerns that. What the state is trying to accomplish in town may have consequences that aren't just about creative housing.
Yeah, so I don't know what the appro, I mean, these public meetings are.
But they're, they're not set up to discuss the financial aspects or the consequences that could come out of something like the MBTA, so. You know, I, my, my concern is if we go too far along, things get. Like, we're marching towards this and then, you know. If, if we then are the first, we got six months into it, there's a winner, let's go over some of this other stuff that, you know, maybe hasn't been discussed or. I'm pretty sure the concerns I have aren't gonna be much covered in the workshop.
Yeah.
So, I, I, I'm not asking you to. To take a decision, but I, I ask you to consider, at what point do we make sure that? All, it's being fleshed out. It may not be fleshed out. By, by one group of people may need to be fleshed out by other people as well.
So I'm just thinking about the overall process, which is bringing something to town meeting, so I guess that, that is one point that FinCom have a conversation.
But that, that could be like six months.
I'm, I'm gonna say, maybe you could have one soon, have one now, you could have input on it. And Rob knows, I don't know if you do, I did not vote for the funding for that because I didn't agree with it, not because. Of the housing, but because of the economic consequences to West Newbury.
So it's not that you disagree with hiring a consultant, it's that you don't want West Newbury to be involved?
I think the state forcing a mandate on, on West Newbury. Um, it is unrealistic to try and obtain.
Put it another way, if we have four different things we're considering, you may find out that one of them is desire. And, and, and my vote for wasn't an endorsement at all of what the state is trying to accomplish, in fact. I, I don't always see the state as acting in our best interest. So, so they, they have, they have their own interests, they're trying to accomplish certain things, so. So that's all I'm trying to say, is I don't wanna get this one month before town meeting and then have a discussion of the economic consequences. That's the concern I have.
Okay.
My suggestion. Engage with the, the planning board of this meeting, and then maybe the FinCom can take it up and give a recommendation to.
Yeah, there's no role in the process as it's laid out for FinCom, so I, I agree with Chris, I would get involved now, and, and if something. You know, if you can precipitate some kind of joint discussion.
Sure, sure, so, so perhaps tomorrow. Get a little more background, but I, I could get a little more direction as to how we might facilitate some discussion.
Do you have any thoughts, Angus?
I, I agree a hundred percent with what you said. I mean, I think if, I think. The consultants who are hired are planners and landscape architects, so they're working on things from a certain way.
Oh, yeah.
About the planning.
And it's a good way, it's a good way.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, correct, and I, I hear you a hundred percent, and I think the planning board, I know the planning board does as well. Uh, I think there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of thought on this that both from the planning board and this board, that. A proposal, the town is obligated to make good faith efforts and, and follow through the, the action plan that was approved, submitted by the state. January approved. We're obligated to go forward and everyone's making a good effort. But if at the end of the day, and that could be like next December, January, if there's not a proposal that. The planning board and the select board feel is in the town's best interest, they both said they're not gonna put something in the voters to, cause they. Have to, you know, they, they want to get, see if there's a proposal that can both meet the state mandate and be in the town's interest broadly.
Yeah, sure.
I think the only way that, that the discussion is gonna be, um. You know, kind of comprehensive enough to, to address those concerns is if, if you and people like you with concerns. Go to the process. That's, that's why these efforts are being made, is to get people to go to the meetings and engage in the process, so. That doesn't preclude the finance committee having its own discussion.
Right.
Uh, but, you know, I think it's, it's, uh. I mean, you've been, you've been through this before a lot, a lot of times, and it's really important to be.
Yeah, so. Right.
Yeah.
It can be important and beneficial to be there. It can also be important and beneficial to also have something else.
Yeah.
Isn't.
Yeah.
You know, everybody's got their little.
Yeah.
Agenda on their meeting and, you know, to, if you want. Agenda on their meeting, and, you know, to if you wanna set it up, so I I again, I'm gonna continue the conversation with Angus, tomorrow will be a mission. But one of the things that happened in in Emerald Emerald Act Four could be an example, is I don't know, I don't know the time, but I will. I will tell you that getting delivered certain things thirty days before the decision is gonna be taken at town meeting doesn't always work. You know how you can have so much stuff flowing through? If it's a complicated issue, you may not have time to sort it out. I remember when we voted as FinCon Emerald Act Four, Ross abstained. Because his head was exploding, because he didn't have the information he felt he needed in order to make an intelligent decision. I told him after we held that vote, that the only intelligent vote that was cast that night was Ross abstaining. That, so, you know, some of this stuff, it's better that we hit it sooner rather than later, that's all.
So I think that's useful information for the planning board to hear.
Yes, no, no, I agree, I agree, then who's the chair now?
I'm not sure if they've been organized.
Yeah, it's it's.
And Stolz?
I believe so.
Okay, yeah, no, that's like.
Oh, okay, I I don't know if there's gonna change recently.
Well, I'm gonna use that excuse to call in.
You could also participate in the public session, just saying, that's what.
Well, I, I.
You're part of the public.
I hear, I hear you, I hear you, but you also know that that I I don't wanna. I mean, you know, they they have the thing they're trying to accomplish. So I would be more listening than participating, that's all.
Community forum.
Thank you.
But 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 if you have input, then the more people are here, it's.
Yeah, yeah, but but you know, there's times to bring up stuff, and there's situations that make it a little bit better. Thank you.
All right.
Not everything you said at once.
Do you wanna give a plug for the Portland Housing Trust and the meetings it has regularly, and because while you're not. That trust isn't directly, you know, it, but there's so much going on with the policy right now. There's maybe next Wednesday, and uh, you know, with the draft action plan, there's there's a, there's a lot of overlap. We're really trying very hard, both at the board and committee level and staff level, to get some. Uh, uh, kind of coordination among many of these, because they're all going on at the same time, and. Uh, you know, whether it's whether it's housing or transportation, or, you know, land protection or rezonancy planning. Uh, we're not really doing any economic development, that's not really a town, uh, really good. We don't have a comprehensive planning process per se, but we are certainly aware that there are a lot of major decisions facing the town. And they're all coming along roughly concurrent.
And they may all be great, but the reality is that you may not be able to live long, you might not sort out.
Right.
The best from something that.
No doubt about it, yeah.
Okay, I will take your advice.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, item P, Chris, did you have something?
I have five items to. Make it quick.
All right, so this is just asking for them to be put on the agenda, this is not a discussion.
Correct.
Okay, just checking.
Number one, it probably would be an executive session, would be the Elliott Fund.
Okay.
Let's just sort of get that organized and formalized at some point.
I think that would be an open session.
Okay, whatever.
Okay.
Huh?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we have that discussion.
Okay, not, like I said, not to discuss individuals and.
Yeah.
Yeah, sort of move forward, okay. Um, number two, I'm taking my my sequence. You'd asked at the last meeting, I mentioned about Opera Fund that we could use for a comprehensive plan. You said come with any head of the regular, there's still a lot of funds.
Yeah, so that that is one of the things that I wanted to have at our next meeting, so I want us to all become prepared to put things on the list. So Angus was gonna.
Yeah, those were both, those first, we're actually on an earlier draft agenda.
I know you pushed down, yeah.
Yeah, I was here till three in the morning Thursday night, and I knew that there was no way to do justice, so we kind of have a alliance, but thank you for the reminder.
That's fine, no, no. The the third one, this is more of a comment versus an issue to address. Um, so I'll make it as an issue addressed in the future. When we approve an application either for a race, or in this case was the alcohol plan at the near.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I didn't. I I felt like I made a mistake there, because when you look, there is a select ones or whatever town. Bylaws, whatever they are, that when you had alcohol, so police is supposed to be there. That application was very loose, it said they will be in attendance. That means they're there. At the the event, not directing traffic, and I felt like we should have taken a a deeper dive on that. Process.
Mm-hmm.
And um, if it was a another group, we probably would have said, what is your police, and we asked the race people, how many police and where. Kind of let that one go, but I felt I did more so than I should have, so.
Okay.
Um, I think we have, we have a lot of different regulations we have to abide by, and that one is specified, we should have looked at it. Um, speaking of regulations, short term rentals, we know that we have to look at that, I mean, you can ask the building inspector. With some point, have to schedule the hearing with Unger, and then what ties in with that is the planning board has their. Hearing by the draft accessory uh dwelling, and so I think I'll try and listen.
I'll bring this briefly, I had a building inspector this morning, been attached with Unger, I briefed the planning, the the town planner. I have a call scheduled with town council tomorrow, I sent over a bunch of information last week. Um, spending a bunch of time on short term rentals a while.
So that'll be at at our next meeting, or?
So he's out of town for the twenty seventh, so we're kind of, I gave him the the dates in July.
Yeah.
Uh, so we won't obviously schedule something till we have a date, but in terms of the bylaw itself and how problematic it is.
Yeah.
Uh, there was a law signed by government maker in the uh twenty eighteen that um. Really changed the land- landscape for short term rentals. Uh, so we're asking town council to tell us kind of what's the best practice at some point, actually, I think it would work for the next meeting on the twenty sixth. I'm gonna be looking to this board for some policy direction on what do we want to do as a matter of policy? Because I know what was put in place in, you know, twenty sixteen, I believe at the time was done for certain reasons. Yeah, I don't know what today's West Newbury's intent is, whether regarding short term rentals, do you want to facilitate it? If so, there's ways to do that, do you want to allow it at all? Uh, I know the building inspector has some some recommendations on that, so I I think discussing that as a policy item. What direction do you wanna go, and then uh based on that direction, we can uh either put together. You know, a revised bylaw or potentially delete and replace or something, just so we can get a clearer policy than what we have right now, which is which is. Be the law.
Yeah, okay, good.
Yeah. Last item.
Mm-hmm.
This is just as I was walking the other day, I thought of the Dunn property. It's sitting foul, it was farmland. I think at some point, we ought to start looking at how to get that back into productive agricultural use. Um, that's not to say that's the permanent objective, but no matter what the plan for that property is down the road, it's gonna be four, five, ten years before anything happens. There's no reason somebody couldn't be farming that for the next five years without any uh burden to the town. Um, having opportunities to use it once we decide what we wanna do with it. So I think we have to start the discussion on how we can. Now, I think of the Matt from Tender Crop Farms, he would probably embrace something very much like live parsley. He has many small parcels he plays around with, so I'm not sure there's many other farmers like him that. Might have an interest, so how do we approach that, if something I'd like to see on the agenda at some point?
Okay.
We still have seven minutes, but we gotta come with a few more items.
We don't have to go to this.
Oh, okay.
I think you can end this early, oh my god.
Yeah, that would be typical.
I have a pretty business when you guys are ready.
Okay.
Sure, let me just, I was just gonna say something.
Okay.
Um, so, um. The Dunn property is something I've thought about quite a bit over time, and and um. The reason why I've never brought it up to this point is because we have too much other stuff on our plate, and my my perspective was that. Um, it's stable, it's being, is with the exception of invasions approaching. Um, it's it is being mowed for hay, um, and it's stable, and I'm not saying we shouldn't take it up, Chris, but just, it's, I'm trying to um. I mean, we saw the list.
I wanna know, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think it's a big push to get something accomplished when the time is available.
That's it.
Okay.
Not not June twenty sixth, maybe the July meeting.
Yeah, um, what's your name?
Jessie Holmes.
Okay.
Great.
So. Um, almost nine years ago, um, my family and I moved to Westonbury. And it's been great, our kids went through the schools here. Um. And now we're selling our home. And when the attorneys did a title search. It came up that the septic system we had, which was done. I don't know when, but before we bought the house. Never received a certificate of compliance.
Mm-hmm.
And it's apparently gonna hold up the the sale of the house, we're supposed to close on June twenty eighth. And so I came to see uh if you guys would either. Sign off on it or make an exception, or what I need to do to facilitate this process so that we can. Close on our house.
So were you intending to go to the conservation commission meeting?
That, am I at the wrong meeting?
Yeah.
Is it, is it Concom or the Board of Health?
No, it's conservation.
Where is that meeting?
Um, I think they might be done already, they meet upstairs, oh, I'm so sorry.
Upstairs.
Yeah.
You should head up and see if they're still here, I don't know if they've left.
Yeah, actually, I haven't seen them.
Was it on the agenda tonight for their meeting, do they?
Oh, this literally happened, this happened.
Maybe it will happen soon.
Yeah, all right, sorry guys.
Oh.
I got you, thanks for enduring what you did.
Yeah.
We're just seeing a septic thing, I mean, yeah.
No, certificate of compliance, they're for conservation.
So if we do get those calls sometimes, I got just a week ago, I was contacted by a resident, I was a building permit. Issue that hadn't been closed out, I put in touch with the building inspector, you know. But with a commitment, yeah, if you can catch them.
Okay.
Great, if not, the conservation agent Michelle will at least give you your best path. Um, uh, I don't know what that is without knowing the details.
Yeah, they're going to come to the beginning.
Totally, come here, she she meant.
Yeah.
Well, they might.
Yeah, they may still be up there, so you you hook around, you know how to get up there?
Yeah, just go around.
Yeah, just hook around, go upstairs over here, and they're down the hallway.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I think Rob made the check.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, that's a shame.
That's not for the health?
No, conservation, a certificate of compliance is for conservation.
Oh, that needs to go.
It has to do with the septic, but.
Yeah.
There's a lot of those, but just.
It's so common, it's frustrating that the attorneys at the closing don't, you know, make people aware of this. So they inherit something that's not been resolved, and then it's on them.
So it's funny, I don't recall when I built my house, I don't remember a certificate of compliance.
Are you in the what, you don't have what?
Oh, no.
Yeah, it's only.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well, but this one, where a week ago I was contacted, and then it was actually building permits that hadn't, that had been issued, but never. Signed off that they were done properly, and the person at the closing, three days, and I. We talked to Sam, and I said, I don't know how to, I just, what it, that's for Sam, but obviously Sam has authority, he can act without a public meeting, so. If the work was done according to permit, I'm sure he issued the, but that stuff comes out all the time.
Unfortunately.
I have to check and see if I got mine. I have to wetlands reputation.
Did you really? Did you get a certificate?
I know, yeah.
If you didn't ask for it, you didn't get it, you have to apply.
No, I think we did.
Is it still going? Oh.
It's wrong.
Did you let them know that he's been sitting down here?
I did, I explained it, I, that is a really nice guy, please take care of him.
I don't know if that's good or bad, right?
I don't know, well, they seem like, they seem like a friendly group.
Yeah, don't stay too long.
All right, any other items for our list?
No.
So, we have a running list, so, I mean. Yeah.
Yeah, you just send one by email.
Well, I throw that, I anticipate it's gonna get addressed, I'm just putting it out there.
Right, right.
All right. Great, all right, it being nine twenty nine, it's time to go home.
Welcome to the gym. So so we have a new rule, we end by nine fifty?
Apparently we do, our newest member has.
We got a half hour cushion here, just in case the. Actually, I'm just getting, I'm just getting rolled.
Go home and have a life.
Right.
Welcome to the gym.
Second. Second.